Hello, everyone. This is the July meeting of the Sustainable Bethel Commission. I'm Catwick Bieber, Chairman of the Sustainable Bethel Commission, and we will pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do not have a chairman's report since I just got back from being out of the country. Do you want me to read the public comments? Sorry, yes, okay. So, yes, so are there public comments?
Yeah, so we have one. This is from, I apologize if I say the name wrong, Rebecca Castilla, 73, Linda Lane, Buckle, Connecticut. She wanted to share this with the commission. Dear Sustainable Bethel Commission, thank you all for the work you do. On listening to the recording of May 21st, 2025, meeting, meeting and reading the minutes of June 18th, 2025 meeting, I noted that you will be discussing whether to continue the use of diversity, equity, and inclusion in the work of the commission. I want to express my strong support of these words and concepts and urge you to continue using them in your work and in the materials your committee distributes. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are at the heart of the work that the Sustainability Commission does, and without these terms, the mission is weakened and compromised. Sustainability as a concept is meaningless unless the people involved make a public commitment to serving every member of the community, which includes understanding the very needs of different groups, including historically marginalized people. Making sure historically marginalized voices are centered in sustainability conversations will endure that your efforts truly meet the needs of Bethel and will lead to greater success overall. I believe that it is important to take a public stand on your commitment to DEI using the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion signals to the community that everyone is truly welcome and valued. The mission statement of the Sustainable Bethel Commission claims that it will serve Bethel by providing inclusive and equitable community impact, and I urge you to stay true to that ideal. Thank you. Rebecca.
Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? There's a hand raised.
I would.
Oh, let me just hold on. Okay, so please state your name and address for the record.
James Keane, 114 Noelwood Drive.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So, just to kind of add on to what was read from Rebecca, you know, I read through a little bit of last month's meeting minutes, and I really do want to urge the commission to vote on the topic of diversity, equity, and inclusion today and to vote in favor of keeping those words in Sustainable Bethel materials. I just want to highlight that Sustainable CT literally uses the word equity as part of its efforts. I think that's part of what I would call social sustainability. Sustainability is not just about protecting the environment, but it's also making sure that, well, people of all creeds and colors and races are included in these efforts. I think to vote against this would really be to give in to the racism, the sexism, and the bigotry that's currently being espoused by the current federal fascistic administration. I don't, I don't believe Sustainable Bethel has ever received any funding or is in line to receive any funding for anything, so I don't think that should be a concern. And I'd also like to highlight that the federal administration has already frozen funds going to schools in Connecticut who have already decided to remove these words from their materials, from their education materials. So, we have proof that doing so doesn't guarantee any receipt of funds, and it seems like the administration just doesn't care either way. And if we're concerned about offending anyone, I can promise you that anyone who would be offended by those words are not going to be supportive in Sustainable Bethel's efforts in any way in whatever they're doing. So, I don't think that should be a concern either. And the bottom line is ultimately keeping the words in does not hurt anybody. If you take them out, it hurts people like me, a person of color, other people who are black and brown, and especially women. I don't think it makes sense to vote against this. In my opinion, the only option is to vote in favor of keeping the language in Sustainable Bethel's written materials. And, thank you. That's my message.
Thank you, James. Okay, next item, Chairman's Report. Like I said, I don't have anything because I'm out of the country. I write these better. The next item is Consideration of Approval Minutes of June 18, 2025. So, any discussion on the minutes from last month? Do I hear a motion?
So much.
And then second, who's second? Second? Yeah, okay. On favor?
I.
Pros, cons, no moves. Okay. Consideration to cancel the August 20th Sustainable Bethel Commission meeting. Any discussion on that?
Yeah, I think that we should keep the August meeting. I think that we should dedicate that meeting to going through the bylaws and the subcommittee structure so that that can be worked on solely focused because it's such a lengthy topic and it's going to require a lot of conversation that I think we should move it to that meeting day and solely focus on the topic. And that way, we could do a vote on the DEI stuff tonight because it's been pushed back more than once already. And in order to have a genuine conversation about what the bylaws ought to be and what the subcommittee structure ought to be, I think it's necessary to decide once and for all the direction that the commission will be going on. So, I think the DEI vote is more important to discuss tonight and solely focus on the bylaws and subcommittee structure on the next meeting. That's my suggestion.
Any other comments?
What was the reasoning behind canceling August 20?
Well, typically, we cancel a month in the summer and a summer to give people break. Okay. You know, because a lot of people go on vacation, and we just haven't had a quorum in the past, so, you know. So, if there's no quorum.
If there's no quorum, would we still be able to discuss the bylaws? We can't even discuss them?
No, no.
Who's scheduled about to be here?
Hi. Yes, yeah, there's discussion here, so, yeah.
Discussion of the mission and bylaws seems like something that should be part of a subcommittee. Do you think we can create that subcommittee today? That way, they can meet as frequently and as often as soon as possible and really get that cemented to bring back to the commission?
Sure. I don't disagree with that. I guess I... I think it has become a topic that would be best served with everybody involved so that this sort of like back and forth and like pushing back the date doesn't keep happening. One of the conversations I was having with Krista was the timeline of making sure we have something to vote on sooner rather than later before the, for the November election because the proposal for the commission itself to be included in charter will be then. So, I think it makes sense to have something that we all agree on by then. So, I think it just requires time.
I agree with that. That's why I think the subcommittee structure will be so valuable is because you can meet more than just this once a month. That way, when we come back next time, we'll have a revised mission, a revised bylaws, and we can just vote on the final product. All the legwork will have been done, and I think that'll give us a way to really expedite the process.
I agree with that also because if you, typically, bylaws are are sent out to every member a month ahead of time, and you have a month to, you know, read them over and that sort of thing. But you have to have worked on them prior to that so that if people would like to make changes, that they're able to. So, that would be the drop dead last time, that the last revision would be October for voting in November. So, you've got only a couple of months to work on that and to allow people to make changes. So, like, the wording should be like this, or the, you know, little things. It could be little things.
So, is it appropriate for me to make a motion before we finish this motion?
For what? What would the motion be?
To form, to vote on the formation of the special subcommittee for the revision, for the review of the mission and bylaws.
So, are we, so you're asking to switch the agenda items?
Is that allowed? No.
Well.
I could just wait.
Yeah, if you want to do that during with a discussion, that's fine. Because right now, we're just talking about if you want to have a meeting in August or not. Okay. So, if you want to do that motion during when we talk about that, that's fine.
I'm around, you know, this, again, this, the microphone, being, you know, forum, I'm here and I can make it.
Yeah, so, but you just want the August meeting to be solely about the subcommittee bylaws? I think the committee requires time to discuss. I agree that the subcommittee, it would be useful to get things going and to like make sure we have something to genuinely discuss. So, I, I don't mind that idea. I think that I can support that. I think we need the time. So, I just want to make sure, like, I get the motion down right because, so, so you want to do, you want to consider keeping August 2nd to talk about, I'm sorry, August 20th, to talk about subcommittee bylaws?
All right, so I think we have to. Do I hear a motion?
Part of the motion? Or is that just discussion on the motion?
So, that would become a motion because she asked for it to become a motion.
So, then you have to amend the motion, so there's a.
So, yeah, yeah. Well, so this wasn't, this isn't, this isn't really, it's just that this is consideration to cancel August. It doesn't, it's just a consideration to cancel. It's not really a motion. Okay, so. And do I hear a motion to keep the August 23rd meeting?
20th, 22nd?
20th?
20th.
20th. Her August meeting. To keep our August meeting and to dedicate the time to discuss the bylaws and the subcommittee structure.
We're only talking about the August meeting.
Yeah, she wants.
You're doing two things at the same time.
She wants to keep the August 20th meeting, but dedicate that meeting to the subcommittee bylaws.
So, that nobody's allowed to say anything else? There's no other conversation?
We will take the time allotted for our regular monthly meeting to discuss all of it so that it doesn't run for four hours. Do you know what I mean? Like, if there's many things on the agenda, it's going to run longer, and the conversation is going to take a long time because it took like over an hour last time, and it was just the subcommittee structure, not even the bylaws at all. So, I just think it's time.
So, is there, so the motion is what?
The motion is to keep the August 20th meeting and to talk about the subcommittee bylaws.
It's just the bylaws, right?
Bylaws and subcommittee structure because it would be in the, it would, the subcommittee structure can't live on its own.
I think we can make that motion now to be voting on it.
Yeah, I mean, there's another item on here to discuss and consider, the subcommittee structure.
Yeah. I think, yeah, this is very confusing.
What if we just keep it to the August meeting?
Either you're voting on canceling or you're not voting on canceling and just let me go to the next agenda item.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, so, there is no, we don't have to, there is no motion to.
No, so we can make a motion to keep it or not keep it.
Okay, so the motion is to, okay, so the motion is not to cancel it, but to keep it. So, do I hear a motion to just continue on our regular schedule, basically? Okay, is there a second? Okay, okay. On favor? All right, so there is an August meeting. Fine, so that, otherwise, it was like, wow.
That was a, yeah, because I don't think it's two kind of different subjects.
Okay, discuss and consider Sustainable Bethel Commission's subcommittee structure. Anybody who wants to talk about that? Is this on the agenda? Do you know?
I think we should dedicate our August 20th meeting to discussing the subcommittee structure and the bylaws and dedicate the whole meeting to that.
I feel that, as we kind of discussed in the last meeting, there's a lot of debate on the potential standing subcommittees, but it seems like there is a real need for this bylaw and mission review subcommittee. So, I would like to move to separate that out and vote specifically on the special subcommittee of the review of the mission and bylaws tonight.
That means.
That we would be able to create that subcommittee and we would be able to start meeting.
So, are you, are you amending this item? Do you have to amend it? Or, because what she's saying is that instead of voting on the full structure, which is up here, is just to vote on the special subcommittee related to the bylaws. Oh, yeah. Tonight, so that whoever wants to be on it, the subcommittee can start meeting. Otherwise, we're just going to meet in August and.
That way, when we come in August.
Then there's a proposal to have everybody.
We'll finalize, this is what it should be.
Right.
And we could just say, yes, sir.
Then there's a proposal that we can all look at. Okay, so, okay, are you, so you're going.
Do I think the motion successfully?
Yeah, wait, do you mind saying it again?
I move to separate.
No, it's for.
But you're, first, don't we have to amend the current, right, motion? We do, according to Robert's rules. We have to amend.
I amend the, I move to amend the current motion to separate the special subcommittee of the mission and bylaws from the vote of the entire subcommittee structure so that we may vote on the review of the mission and bylaws separately.
So, that's the first.
That's my first motion.
First, okay, do I hit, so the first one, who's second on that one?
Second.
On favor? All right, okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
She's amending the current agenda item.
Vote on it to separate.
Okay.
You have, I'm just breaking it apart.
Yeah, so that's Robert's rules of water, which we're following.
The motion already existed. Discuss them.
No.
Okay. No, it did not exist.
For what we amended?
You can't amend a motion that hasn't been proposed.
So, then it's just the proposal to form the subcommittee in order to discuss.
Okay, so, yeah.
Who would be the subcommittee?
Okay.
So, that we can discuss once it's created.
Okay, so this is to consider Sustainable Bethel Commission's subcommittee structure, but you want to.
Pull out the one.
Pull out, yeah.
To just vote on that thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can still vote on the other ones, but I want to vote on this one separately.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, so you still want to vote on the structure tonight?
We can discuss it. I'm not there yet.
I know, but if you still, but if you still want to vote on the structure tonight, then you shouldn't amend the motion because you're still going to have it.
You can't amend the motion?
You can, but if you're still going to.
But it's going to be two separate pieces. It's like, does it need an amendment to be kind of split apart?
Well, yeah, you can do that.
So, I'm amending it to split it apart.
Okay, 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 so, got it. So, you motion, you second, all in favor? Okay.
Krista?
Yes.
Okay, good. So, that's a separate.
I move to discuss and vote on the special subcommittee of the mission and bylaws. On the creation. Thank you.
Is that tonight or is that in August?
Right now.
Right now, forgot it. Okay, just making sure. Okay, second?
Second.
Okay.
Hi. So, was it your second thing?
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Before you vote it, you have to discuss. Is there anybody who wants to discuss this new motion?
Creating the, the subcommittee for the structure and bylaws.
Um, I think.
My question was who would be on it?
Who would be on it?
Well, that's going to be during the discussion, so that right now, you're just making a vote to do this.
Right.
And then, and then you can talk about it.
We should form the subcommittee so that we can discuss the subcommittee structure so that.
Wait, wait, so you all voted to do this. That's fine. Now, discuss it.
Right.
So, we voted to create the subcommittee? I thought they did, yeah.
I think we didn't call for a vote.
Yeah, I don't think we voted on that.
And then we called for a vote.
And then, and then you seconded. And then I said, and then I said.
And then I said, yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, I made a motion to make a vote on it, but I didn't realize.
You don't need to make a motion to vote. Your vote, your motion is to vote.
Okay. It's not the committee's.
Yes. Okay, so who wants to be on that?
Wait a minute, did it pass?
Yes, it is, yeah. Now, we're talking about it.
So, you can all talk about it now. This, now this is a formal subcommittee.
Who would like to be on the subcommittee?
I would.
So, we will meet, we will text each other, we will form a meeting.
Is it just the two? Are you two?
I.
So, three, yeah, that's now, okay.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure.
But, please copy me so that your meeting, so that can be communicated to whoever has to communicate.
What do you need in order for us, since it's an official subcommittee meeting? Like, do we just need to take the notes and send them to you, or does it matter?
I'm not sure. I'll have to, I'll have to, I'll have to scan.
If you could let us know.
Yeah, I could do it tomorrow. Yeah, because in the past, like when we had the planning committee for the Sustainable Connecticut, Tia did it formally.
Okay, yeah, I'll have to double check with Dan, and I'll double check with him, and then I'll.
Yeah, and then we'll figure out.
Yeah.
So, other questions? Would that be true of all the subcommittee? Would that be new orders on any resources?
But there might not be a lot going on in all the other ones either. This project is, right?
Yeah, and it has to be like official chat.
Anyway, so that's. It does, because that's the way it runs everywhere. Yeah, it talks as the end of that. Or at least it's on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I talked to Mary.
Yeah, Mary.
Did I hear you can't have a quorum out of this subcommittee?
Yeah. No, I think you're saying it's more than. Right, because, because, so, I got to figure out, I got to.
Pass along anything, right?
Yeah, because if, yeah, because if a certain number of you talk, then it'll become a quorum, or you can have an illegal meeting, basically. So, yeah, so that's why I'll double check with Dan tomorrow. I'll find it out, and then I'll let you guys know.
So, how many, how many members do we have on the subcommittee? You have three, three. No, 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 and the commission has eight, eight seats. Eight seats.
Seven people.
Is five, okay.
But we have vacant seats, right?
Oh, for here, you guys have nine.
Nine, oh, there you go.
And seven is a quorum. You have nine, and five's a quorum. And seven existing commissioners.
So, is it four or four?
No, you have eight. Yep.
Oh, that's right, because only one. Right, really, only one vacant seat. So, once it gets, hopefully, once it gets into the charter, it's seven. Four seats.
I think that's the end of the discussion, right?
Okay, are we good?
Yep, all right, good.
So, you'll listen now, you'll just keep me posted, and that's perfect, okay. So, Gabriella, discuss and consider communication content to include diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI language.
I open it to other people who want to make comment. Krista?
I think it's important because when the commission was formed, that this was the verbiage that was used. So, I don't feel like it necessarily has to be called DEI, but the words diversity, equity, and inclusion should be included in documentation and things that we put out. And I agree with our public comment that, you know, this needs to include people and people of Bethel, and everyone is. And that our decisions should be based upon that, the needs of others.
Sunny? Yeah, I agree also with the public comment. I don't think there's a basis for this country without diversity. So, I think it's, I vote for it.
We are a town entity. We should be following the town standards for this, and I think that will be very well positioned to be discussed under that mission and bylaws review subcommittee be brought back with a final, how it's going to be incorporated.
Right.
So, like, part of the subcommittee of the review of the mission and bylaws will be figuring out how to incorporate or not that in with our mission and bylaws. And I believe it should be done in whatever way the town, like, we are trying to, whatever way the town supports currently. So, I think that be a discussion that, like, is under that subcommittee and then comes back and we go on, and yes, we go on.
Okay, so, the way I'm understanding this is.
But that's how the conversation started though.
Right, so my understanding is, yes, this is a good thing, but it's going to be discussed further with the, with the group of all of you related to the mission bylaws. Is that how you, what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
And ultimately, we should respect what the town stands as.
Right, because we're appointed by the town, right?
So, under your understanding, what is the town's position?
I haven't done a lot of research, but I don't think the town does anything against it. I've never heard anything anti-DEI from the town, so.
Um, right, I agree that we should continue to discuss it in the bylaws and everything because that's part of, that's an extension of this conversation. I do want to remind that this particular vote came out because I was essentially stopped from using a particular handout that I created. So, that's why this vote and discussion is happening. And I agree that it needs to continue into the bylaws and everything. But I think it's important to make that decision and distinction now since it has been a topic of contention or worry from other commissioners.
Do you know, do you know. I see what you're saying, let's see, like, once we become part of the charter, it's my understanding that we aren't allowed to create and disseminate materials without review from the town. That's why I think, like, we should go based on the town stance. That way, when we go to have those materials approved, they make it true. Up until now, we've kind of made and distributed the materials as we saw fit. Whereas, once you're in the charter, I believe all of that material has to be viewed by Dan first, approved. So, I mean, we as a commission say, sure, we want it in there, we put it in there, and then Dan would make that final decision. So, I think, like, if it's in our mission and bylaws, and obviously, we as a commission have decided that, yes, it's something we value and want to include, and then the town officials will make that final.
I have a question. So, I mean, is the committee went to, it's created by the town, yes.
It was created by the town. By the Board of Select.
Yes, but, I mean, are we allowed, like, vote on matters independently? Or does it have to follow elective with the town?
It's a general. A general. So we're at ad hoc, we have no legislative authority, we have no budget. So we are appointed by the first selectman, we are approved by the board of selectmen, and as appointed by the town, or as an ad hoc only commission. Again, no legislative authority at all. So I think what I'm hearing is, yes, we need to vote on this, but any document that we come up with really needs to, will have to go through the first selectman, and he will decide if that is something that will have to go to the board of selectmen for approval. It's no different than any other commission committee in the town that is part of the charter.
So, so my question is, do we have to enter direction first and then vote? Or, I mean, we've discussed this for like a very long time now. Can we vote? And then go to the town and say, hey, this is something we've discussed.
Absolutely.
Go to the town and say, this is our recommendation. But of course, if the town has an objection, we will come back and discuss that then. It's almost like we're presenting the first selectman with, you know, our stance, rather than wait for a direction to come to us, and then we take this text. So it is, in that sense, still independent, and coming from this group which was approved by the first selectman. And, and exactly with the vision, and.
Right.
And so, because I, 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 again, I, I believe we're kind of going in circles. So can be like chopped in the timeline, take a vote, present it, so Dan can like not have this, he doesn't have to spend too much time, just a year of name.
Oh, I agree with that completely. Yeah, I think you vote on this, but like Dana is saying, talking about that, w- once you all put the proposal together for the bylaws, you bring it back to the Sustainable Bethel Commission, then we can forward that to Dan and the board of selectmen. I'm seeing that as an issue.
Right, so I, I want to add that, um, I want to add that this discussion and vote was forced because of how my work was treated, right? If our mission always included these terms, I don't understand why at any point, all, any of the commissioners had concern, since it had always been part of what our mission has been. So clarifying where this body stands, I do think is important if we're going to continue to do the work we had originally set out to do. Uh, because I, I don't think that, you know, omitting or erasing or excluding groups of people or, you know, s- symbols of people, I think is really detrimental. Uh, I think it's odd that my work in particular was singled out. Um, and I want it known that I don't grant permission, and I never have for my work to be altered or edited or redistributed. And I, you know, I've respected that, that we were supposed to pause and not distribute anything. Uh, and I want to make sure that if, whatever the vote decides, whatever the vote said, that my work isn't altered. Um, and we can decide whether or not to use those types of, uh, tangible, uh, you know, materials in the future, approved or otherwise, um, but that's how we got here to begin with. So I am ready to vote and go on.
So let's get back to the, the, the vote. Um, thank you for that, Gabriella, for the history. Um, all right, so is there any more discussion on this? Is there any, from your point of view, Dana, are you okay with what you said, that it will be part of the subcommittee?
Ultimately, all materials going forward are town materials.
Correct, you're absolutely right about that. Krista?
But doesn't that mean that if the town says, comes back and says, I want you to change a few things in here, and we would be required to change that?
Or you can make a different flyer altogether.
But it's in general, we're just doing this in general right now, and I, I know, um, yeah, I don't know what's gonna happen, but we need to vote on this.
Okay.
Is there anything else, before I ask for a motion? No, okay, is there a motion to consider communication content to include diversity, equity?
To continue to include.
To continue, well, it says consider.
Well, I should say continue. Because that was the, the motion I made last time.
It's fine, I'm here, okay. All right, sure, that's fine. Communication content to include diversity or include D E I language. Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
In favor?
I.
Poses, abstentions?
So moved.
Okay.
That means the vote passes, right?
Yeah, correct. Is there anything else, Gabriella, on this?
Nope.
Okay. All right, commissioner reports. Sunny?
So yes, um, I just had a meeting with Bob. I'm sorry.
I think his name is right.
Um, so he is a representative, um, of you know, a group of vendors to ever source, and ever source has this program called S B E A, Small Business Energy Advantage Program, that, um, has a few items that assist small businesses to take advantage of, um, funds that are available with ever source, which actually comes out of all of our bills in any case. Um, and so that can go towards funding projects with small businesses to help them with their energy efficiency initiatives. So this could be something like replacing, um, light bulbs, fluorescents with, uh, elegance, uh, for instance, and the examples that Bob shared were, um, pretty solid, so, um, for a project, just to give rough estimates, like a ten thousand dollar project, ever source would fund about six thousand roughly, and rather, uh, so they would give money, you know, they would give six thousand, and then the rest of the four thousand would be financed, having over six years, so that, and put one particular example, the monthly payment was something like a hundred dollars, but then the savings per month turned out to be a hundred and four dollars. So these are sort of lowbrow kind of projects, it seems like, and are really a good one, so, um, I have, uh, created a recurring meeting with Bob to be, every Wednesday, and I'll keep this moving. So I will request for help if anybody has the interest and the time help me with this, I would appreciate this initiative. I will be taking Catherine and Janice's help to meet with the small businesses in town and organize, you know, potentially webinars, maybe in person. Uh, I'll have to think about this, this is really hard up the.
The chambers, yes, that, they're just get the word out that this is available.
And I know we want to like together a solid, like, was a tracking program, like, you know, who qualifies and, um, who actually contacted this committee and took advantage of it, and then who ultimately qualified, what was the, um, estimated project impact and the final impact. So I want to make this, this looks like a, a project that really will benefit small businesses. So I'll, I'll make the whole, uh, the plan and then move forward. So we have also metrics for the future, right? So that we can then ultimately provide an input to legislators to say how this program should be structured, ultimately, so this broader benefits. So it's gonna be heavy lifting. So, um, if anyone has the time and the interest, I would definitely appreciate it.
Is there a cap to how much they, they would?
No, they have all kinds of programs, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, normally this, but I also attended another, um, webinar by ever source last week. Um, and then they talked about really large manufacturers, even. Um, and so this is like all kinds of programs with ever source, but it's, it's still a lot to wait through. Uh, but this one seems like immediate, tangible, and more relevant to the kind of businesses that are sort of in mainstream. Though we do have some really large businesses too in Bethel, um, and so I'll, I'll start off with the smaller ones. Um, and then, you know, go from there. But yeah, I think it definitely looks very promising, yeah.
Uh, I, I just have a question about the small businesses. Um, obviously, a lot of small businesses lease or rent their space. So in order to make, let's say, improvements on like heating or something that would require landlord, so how does that, or is that not the type of improvements, or is it just for people that like, oh?
No, I think it's for anyone, because changing light bulbs, um, and yeah, most, uh, I'm, you know, kind of familiar with commercial leases, but changing light bulbs, the landlord should not unreasonably withhold a million for items like this. So I think it should be up to the law. But, but the great part, I think.
And the da- and the data is really important. Because once we become a formal commission, the data we collect is gonna become over important, you know, going forward. So this is a good starting point for that.
So thank you for the.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. I was excited when I heard about this. Yeah, yeah, it's a good program. It'll be, it'll be good for, um, the, it's small businesses here in Bethel. Any other comments about that? What does S B E A stand for again?
Energy Advantage.
Advantage, okay. I'm sorry.
I just didn't, I just didn't get the last word.
So Krista, I leave that one in there for you, the next one.
Oh, yeah, and I haven't gotten anywhere on any of that, but I think the next, um, step would be to, uh, go through the gardens that we have right now and see if we can register them as pollinator pathways, so that we at least have something on the board. They have a whole map on the website that shows, uh, where these gardens are. And, um, Bethel doesn't have any on there now, and I know we have a butterfly garden from the Bethel Garden Club. There are three rain gardens, and the, um, McCower has two. And, um, Bennett has one that would qualify. Um, so I think to, to kind of get on the board, on the map, would, would help us in, in that respect. Um, urban forestry, I still.
For the pollinator pathways, you're basically saying, like, we just need to upload the location data to the Bethel webpage?
Not the Bethel webpage, Pollinator Pathway has their own page.
Something like that, right?
Yeah, Dana made like the Bethel Pollinator webpage, so that those things would live there.
Okay.
So if you, so did you upload everything or no?
No, I sent it to Jamie from Pollinator Pathways, who actually happens to live in Bethel, and she
Right.
coordinated the behind the scenes situation, had it uploaded, created.
But it doesn't appear on the national website.
Nash, it's a state website.
State website, I mean. Is it a state or a, I think it's nationwide.
We'll have to pull it up and.
Okay. I mean, you can look at your state.
And you can look at all the towns, and the towns that aren't available are grayed out, and we got Bethel in the top page.
Sunny has a question.
I have a question. So I mean, by registering on this site, like, what's like the, how does it help, like, what's benefits? By putting the, it's more to Krista, by putting this on the.
Yeah, I mean, well, the whole pollinator pathway, I'd have to look again at what the, it's about, um, connecting, um, pollination sites for, you know, pollinators can be birds, they can be insects, they can, and just, not just butterflies and bees and stuff like that. And the mission really is to make it so that there's sort of a ribbon of this pollination, um, throughout, you know, so it could be in your own backyard, like you could register your backyard as a pollinator pathway.
What does that mean? Does it mean you stop using chemicals, or like, wh- what is like in, in reality?
Oh, it's, it's most, well, it's about stopping using chemicals, except, especially, you know, nectoids. And then also, which kill the bees. And, um, it's also about, um, planting native, um, things and things that provide, uh, nectar and food for the pollinators. And so like, there's a sort of misconception about, say, like a butterfly bush. Um, but deal, it's not, it provides nectar, but they kind of call it like the junk food for pollinators. And they can collect nectar on it, but it's not a host plant. So nobody lays their eggs on there, and the larvae don't eat that plant for, um, to then morph into something.
So if I register, like, for instance, my home, like my backyard, do I get communication, like?
So I believe you would have to do some of these things first, right? Prove that you are planting natives, maybe have a certain percentage, I'm not sure the exact qualifications.
Okay. Yeah, it's a percentage, I'm pretty sure.
That's.
Yep.
And then, once it qualifies, you get like certified as a pollinator pathway.
And that's like, you know, like, good job. But I, okay, so it's an initiative, and it's, it's to try to, because the bees are in decline, and the, the pollinators are basically in decline.
So what you're, what you're gonna do is, because we already have a, a place, right, on this pollinator pathway website?
Yes, I know you did it, right.
We definitely did it, we're gonna figure out why.
Yeah, so I mean, maybe the two of you can talk, because I think this is important and we can promote it. You know, and communicate it to everybody that, you know, this is available, and this is one of the projects, right?
And you can also get like, for, I think, like seven dollars or something, or twelve dollars, you can get like a little sign that says that this is part of the pollinator pathway.
Gabriella?
I, I think to, Sunny's point, I think it's to demonstrate that it's like a growing network of safe gardening practices, so that, one, awareness spreads, and two, so that there's like sanctuary for insects and other types of pollinators. So there isn't like a, other than the potential placuvi, uh, it's, it's just growing the awareness and network of, and showing that as individuals or this entity or the town, we support those, um.
And it might engage people, it might engage people once this is.
Because you're not gonna be stewarding your own
Yep.
property to, you know, to help actually all wildlife, because they're all sort of knit in with each other, and, um, the urbanization has, you know, created this vision of the perfect lawn as being the way the houses should, you know, everyone should have this wonderful lawn, if you use fertilizer and all this other stuff. And that's part of the reason why there is the decline, and actually, our food supply depends upon it. Because you think like apples, all of your fruits and, and, um, vegetables require, you know, like the squash doesn't start to grow until somebody pollinates it, and then the, and then the fruit starts to grow. So we need it for our food supply, really.
And, and just one last thing to add, I, in the Plan of Conservation and Development and the town website for the stuff that we did for Sustainable C T, it indicates what the town's sustainable practices are, so that could be one of those linked items that demonstrate what can be done on a personal or smaller level to, to help the sustainability of the area.
And that's recertification is coming up, so.
Right, yeah.
Couple of years, yeah. So can you guys talk and then? Super on the same website.
Okay, I'm, I'm in there.
Yeah, you're, you're, you're there, you're there. Okay, Gabriella, anything on the Wisconsin stuff? Um, so, no, no one's reached out, the, one of the things that I spoke to, oh, I guess that's not Wisconsin, um. No, but when we initially started talking, uh, with the department, they said that it, sometimes it just takes a while, people do different things at different semesters.
Right.
It's summer, you know, so it, it really just depends on not to be too discouraged, um. Um, I do think that maybe when all this subcommittee structure is canned out in the fall, we can discuss like adding other colleges.
Um, absolutely.
You know, because depending on who we have relationships with, like people are here for the summer, they're looking for.
Well, there's a new president, there's a new president of West Con now, and he's very progressive. So let's wait, you know, because there's so much other things, so many other things going on. But it may be, I mean, I thought about this for, since he was appointed, I think a month or so ago. I'm like, oh, we should get a meeting with him, you know? It might be worth it, right? And so, but yeah, I mean, I get it. I'm just keeping it on the agenda because it's something that we want to.
Right, hopefully somebody will show interest.
Yeah, I, I think too, it's written in a very broad sense. So that maybe we need, again, when we have subcommittees, we need to maybe, um, either make a couple of internships or narrow the focus so that someone can read it and say, oh, okay, I can clearly envision what it is that I have to do to do this internship or to, you know, make, report back on this. When it's very broad, you were kind of leading it up to them to figure out, well, how do I want to come at this?
Yeah, that's something that, once we have a subcommittee, I mean, people that actually are popular in the subcommittees, that can happen, but, um.
We were, we were, Krista is interested in adding specific locations as a starting point. Um, sort of that inventory.
That's fine. I mean, you guys decide what you want to do. I'm just, oh, from my point of view, it's a good project. I agree that we, we should, at some point reach out to other schools, but I want to keep it on the agenda because we, we definitely want to have this happen.
Yep.
You know, that, so however, whatever pace it's going, um.
And we're kind of at the new bit on the block.
But I think summer is, is a deterrent because a lot of people want to be.
Yeah, I do think we should join their orientation thing in the fall. So I'll reach out specifically about that.
That's fine, sure.
Because then we'll actually meet some of the students and be able to get a sense.
Yeah, and then you can talk to them and see, you know, get a sense of exactly what they want to do.
More very interesting.
Sounds great. Anything on Earth Day? Again, I'm just keeping it there because it's something we work on.
Just waiting. I think, oh, actually, I was able to check in the Sustainable Connecticut Awards Ceremony always has like all the different partners and people. And there was a representative of Ever Source. And I asked that representative if they knew how to get in contact with the mobility exhibit so that we can get an actual update. And basically it's already booked again.
Oh.
Um, and but there's, they're in the process of getting a second mobility exhibit that may be reserved. So I'm, we're potentially, we're on the potential waiting list if they have one.
But going forward, because Sunny is now, um, has this, we have a relationship with Pace and Ever, well, I know for the S B E, there might be an opportunity for something, other display also for their, related to this other something.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So anyway, moving forward, I think there's going to be a lot of cross conversations with all of this that we're doing. So this is great. Um, okay, so America 250, we have been moving very quickly, meetings every two weeks. And the reason why we have meetings every two weeks is because the goal was to get to be able to table at the shop and stroll and get, um, a submission form for anybody in the town that has a great idea, a story. And then we can help calendar that and get the word out. Um, as I said before, there is no money. And the committee does not have the resources to help marshal anything through. But we want to make sure that everybody is aware that this is something that's very important. It's historic preservation as part of sustainability. So can you bring that up on the screen? The, um, it's under, go to town. I'm going to show you. There's two ways that we can do this, all right? So I have postcards and they give you each one of them and there's a queue, just the town.
Town website?
Yeah, and then go under community. Yeah. Ooh, all right. There you go. Now click on America 250. Okay, so.
Oh, wait, hold on, let me share the screen.
Yeah. Cool. All right, go down. So, but, but keep, keep it right there with the little logo. So the committee worked on that. Everything was going extremely fast because the goal was to get to the shop and stroll because that's a pretty popular event. Um, and we came up with what it means, celebrating history, honoring community, inspiring the future. Go down. So they can see where the clicky thing is. Okay, so, um, go to, to, well, the, yeah, click where it says to submit your event. Click here. Great. So Janice and Jack were extremely helpful and, um, to the committee, putting this together. And it's really simple. It's really like a check, 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 check. There, go down a little bit, you know, name, organization, contact information, keep going. Um, what is your program? What is your idea? What is your story? What is your audience? What's the timeframe? And we're looking at not only the, from between now and July 4th of next year, but through 2026 because a lot of history happened after July 4th. So it's for another year and a half. Here's, um, this aligns with, um, the programs. We aligned it with the programs of the state, with federal government. And basically that, and the ideas to realign to the Declaration of, what the meaning of the Declaration of Independence. And that is for the town of Bethel. Um, go ahead, go to next. So it's really check, 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 check. And then, you know, you explain what you want to do. So we want to get this out to everybody. Dan's going to have it on his, um, weekly newsletter. I asked him to put it on there as just a continuation because we want to make sure that everybody sees it. There'll be social media, there'll be interviews, there'll be tabling. Um, so I wanted to just bring it to your attention that we want as many people as possible to be involved in this whole effort. Um, you can, I'll give you this, but you can have, if you're interested, you can just go to the website. It's really easy to click on that. Um, when we start getting submissions, then, um, the committee will evaluate and then they'll, they'll come up with a calendar so everyone knows what's going on. We can just pass this. Yeah, absolutely. Let me give you some. I'll bring them over. Yeah, we'll keep this here. Yeah. Yes, I have some. So if anybody's interested, they can submit. It's really easy. And, um, I will say if there's something that you have an idea or a story that you like for the, it to be related for the Sustainable Bethel Commission, then just bring your proposal back to the Sustainable Bethel Commission for discussion. So everybody can, can discuss it.
How are these paid for?
Um, not by the town.
By who?
Somebody else.
Who? You don't have to tell.
I, I know I don't have, I'm not going to.
Okay, isn't that?
It's private.
Odd.
Odd that somebody else paid for it. The town was willing to pay for it because they weren't that expensive. They were like a hundred bucks. Um, but somebody volunteered to pay for it.
That's nice.
So that's all I have. Any questions about that?
Are there going to be any, um, base programs that the town say like a reading of the Declaration of Independence or anything like that?
Yep. Yep.
So this is a town.
It's a town initiative. It's a town initiative.
Are we as a commission doing anything?
That's up to, up to all of you what you want to do or you can do it individually. That's what I was trying to say. If the commission would like to do something, then anybody that has a proposal can bring it back to the commission and the commission can talk about it and submit.
Okay. So this was approved by the town, by Dan?
Mm-hmm. It was.
Uh, I remember we initially talked about it several months back that the initial idea was to have different town entities represented in this commission. What happened to that?
Dan appointed a group who's got approved by the Board of Selectmen. That's what happened.
And so what are the groups included, I guess?
The group is, I'm co-chairing with Kristen Robinson, Bill Hagan is on, and Pat Wild, Mary Ferry, I think, yeah, Mary Ferry and Rebecca, Rachel Ribeiro.
So that's the Historical Society.
Patriot Society.
Okay.
Patrick Wild is, is the town historian. Um, Rachel represents the Board of that. And Kristen is, um, she, her background is heritage. That's what she does.
And then Tom from.
Oh, Tom, I'm sorry. Oh, totally bringing Dad here. Yes, Tom from the library. He is a wealth of information. He's awesome.
I thought the Sustainable Bethel was supposed to have representation on that.
I guess I'm representing the Sustainable Bethel Commission, but I don't have a project. So if anybody else wants a project, you can submit it.
As co-chair, you're representing?
I'm, I'm co-chair for the, this, this initiative. That's the way I looked at it. So if the Sustainable Bethel Commission would like to submit something, that's perfectly fine. I think, I think the, the commission should.
So you're not representing the commission? I'm, I'm just trying to clarify what it means.
Well, I'm chairman of the, of the commission, of this commission. So yes, I have, I suppose I have dual roles. So if there's something that you would like to submit, please bring it to the commission.
Which commission?
This one.
Why not directly to the?
Okay, then just submit it through that. That's fine.
I think the distinction would be in order for, like, if you wanted to do something as an individual, you would bring it directly to the 250 Commission. But if you wanted to do something as a commission, we would have to decide as a commission and then bring it to the 250 Commission.
You can just submit it through the form. Yeah.
As the commission?
As the commission. Yes, other people are doing the same thing. For instance, like the Historic Society submitted something. Tom from the library submitted something for the library. Patrick submitted something.
I'm confused because I, we, I have not understood that we as a commission needed to approve of something in order for it to be submitted to that commission because we were under the impression that we were going to be part of the commission. So I'm just trying to clarify what next steps we have to take.
Do you have an idea? Let's, let's just make, let's get down to the mundane. It's getting late. Um, do you have an idea?
Uh, we have several ideas.
Yeah, great, then submit them.
To the Bethel 250.
Correct.
Okay, but at what level does it have to be? You know, does, is it, is it an idea or?
It can be an idea. It can be a story. It can be anything. Literally anything.
Even if there's not currently thought out to the, to the nth degree like this is. I'm just thinking about like if you were to have sort of an Earth Day event. So like at, um, so how mature does that idea have?
So when you look at the form on the second page, it asks you to give details.
So then you're, you're basically signing on to take on the.
It's whatever you want to do. We're not. It can be a simple idea. It can be a, an event. It can be a painting. It can be. I don't know.
Yeah.
I'm not the history person here.
Okay, yeah. I guess, I guess I, I'm sort of disappointed that it's not more cohesive.
Okay. Well, maybe your idea and your story will help that. Okay. All right, so our next meeting is August 20. Is there any other business?
So if the, oh, okay, I want to put something on there. I guess.
Our next month or today?
Oh, that's not. I'll bring it up to the end.
Oh, other business?
Okay.
Yeah, please.
So Bob, who I met today, I would like to bring him to that meeting to talk more about.
Okay, so that's a special guest. Okay. In August.
In August, assuming it is happening and if it doesn't happen in August, then September. So it begins.
Uh, I thought we were focusing on the bylaw conversation for August.
Oh, yeah, we did.
We just. Keeping the August meeting. We didn't specify what was in it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
But if we are successful with the subcommittee, it shouldn't be very long. So it should already be pretty much formulated and done. So we should have time for other.
Or like 10 minutes, like.
Right, but I thought the bylaws were going to be discussed too. I don't think anybody's ever looked at those. It's very sort of like rough edit.
But it shouldn't be rough edit by the time it gets there, right? The subcommittee is going to meet before then, get something really flushed out, really solid, and just bring the final product back for a vote.
That would be a great idea.
Right. No, no, I, I understand that, but I guess I'm, I thought we were also talking about the actual bylaws that we can include the subcommittee structure in the bylaws. Like, I don't think it can live separately.
No, I don't think it can either. You're, you're.
And we've never looked at the bylaws as a group.
So can, can we like maybe separate all these compositions that can be spaced 10 minutes for like just guests?
Yep.
I think that.
Yes, so the short answer is yes.
Okay, and then we can discuss.
Okay.
Because that might be a long discussion.
Sorry, are we, are we? Do you want to make a motion about, um, focusing on the sub? The, for the next meeting, or are you just going to?
I just put on the agenda. Okay. Because my assumption is now there's a subcommittee that they would be and they'd bring something back.
Yeah.
Okay, that's my assumption.
And I don't think it has to be solid, solid, you know, because you want to have a discussion about it. And I do agree that the, the subcommittees need to be part of the bylaws. Those need to be spelled out in the bylaws, that the, this is how we're structured.
All right, so this will be, the subcommittee structure will be put back on the agenda. For next one.
No, I mean.
Or just the bylaws.
Bylaw and subcommittee, but I think they should be together.
Is the subcommittee part of the bylaws?
It should be. It should be.
So if you have the bylaws on there, you've covered.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, that's perfect. Oh, I have a other business. I, do, did we? Yeah.
Yeah, well, this is for next month. This is for next month. Okay.
Um, update at the Sustainable Connecticut Awards Ceremony. I also spoke to Anna who works at, oh my gosh, I'm forgetting right now, Children's something. Um, and essentially she talks to different groups, entities, towns, organizations uh, about, uh, pedestrian safety. Um, so in talking with her, she's going to put together a tentative proposal for us or me to share with, uh, this commission or and or, uh, town departments. So really at some point, connecting with Dan to discuss and review that proposal to see how that pedestrian safety information can help move along or add documentation and support to like the walkability of, uh, Stony Hill based on the walk audit and everything. You know, discussing whether or not we can meet with departments, like municipal departments, potentially like P N Z or whether we meet with, uh, a commission or whether it's like a town like presentation where anybody could sort of, like, it, it is open. She has a lot of options, but ultimately it focuses on pedestrian safety, uh, information and features and things like that. So that towns are better aware of what options are available to improve pedestrian safety.
Was she a vendor or she with the city of Connecticut?
Um, I mean, I don't know if she was a, I don't, what do you mean? She didn't have a table. She was like a person attending.
Okay.
Um.
Was she with the city of Connecticut?
Yeah, it's like the children's, I'm totally forgetting. Um, here, let me look it up. Um, here, let me look it up. Connecticut Children's. I think that's what it's called. Connecticut Children's.
Just, what is her email? Is it a .gov?
Yeah, it's ConnecticutChildren's.org. Yeah, and she was there at Sustainable, because she, I guess Connecticut's Children is one of the partners that partners with Sustainable Connecticut. And she was saying that their organization is available to any Sustainable Connecticut town or any, any registered town to provide those free services. And that was the nice part that
Can she send something to you and we can distribute it?
She is and
Okay, great. Would she come here like give a, a little guest speaker thingy?
Potentially. I think it's a matter of deciding what would work best for the information, right? Because like us receiving it would be informational for us, but we're not the ones making those decisions. Like would it make more sense to meet with public works or would it make sense to meet with the entire town? I, I think it's like still in development.
If she has stuff that we can look at and share, that'd be really great.
Yep, she's putting it together and she's gonna get it to me at some point soon.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just quickly, can you go through shop and stroll? How were these distributed?
They're gonna be at the Historic Society table.
Okay, and
In the past, has this commission had a table at the shop and stroll? Yes, and I said something, but I can't be into questions at once.
Okay.
So is that something you want, are, are you
I have the garden club table. So, so, okay.
Yeah, I'm gonna be participating with this other thing, so.
Okay.
Because we're trying to launch it quickly. Okay. Great. And launch into adjourn?
Sub moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Great.